Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the city council meeting for September 12th, 2018 to order. At this time for our moment of silence, I was at a very moving 9/11 remembrance ceremony yesterday at the Arsenal. You know, and it hit me as I was sitting there. I have 10 grandchildren and none of them were born when it happened. And many of us have those dates in our head where you remember where you were when that happened, or remember where in some of us where you found out that President Kennedy was shot. And many of us have different things like that in our lifetimes. And Lieutenant General Mason was the keynote speaker, and Senator Loebzak also added on, you know, "It's part of our responsibility to let our young people know what happened in our history." So I would share with all of us, as tragic as that was, and as the brave, many brave men and women and first responders that participated, but for all of us, be mindful of the impact that these kind of current events have on our whole lifetimes, and how it's important for us to share those with the young people in our lives and in provide that as part of our remembrance. So with that, please, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman Grip, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose, Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
McGuinness.
Here.
Clule.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin the meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I want to thank you for joining us. At this time, I will ask that you please turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a discussion agenda, you're asked to do so and encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the council under Public with Business, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So with that, again, thank you. First of all, will then Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for August 22nd?
Seven seconds.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Will then Alderman approve the, will move the approval of the report of the committee of the hall for September 5th, 2018?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. We have a couple of appointments this evening, and one presentation, and with that, first of all, the appointments for, we have one new for planning and zoning. We have two, one for zoning, a new appointee for zoning board of adjustment, and one for historic preservation. I would ask a motion for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Just no on number three.
No on number three, okay. With that, we will move forward, and we will thank those, and I am thanking all those individuals for participating, and we will begin the orientation process for those individual. So thank you to all of them. We have one presentation this evening, and that's for the Davenport Public Library Summer Reading Program. And I think Amy and, Amy Groskow and Steve Eming are going to come up as the director and the board chair, and a bunch of hardware. That's great.
Yes. We have, we have a whole big team here tonight, so that's awesome. So, as a reminder, the purpose of the summer reading program is to encourage students to read and learn throughout the summer as a way to prevent or reduce summer learning loss. Studies show that students who read and participate in enrichment activities over the summer are less likely to need to relearn those skills from the previous year, and they can enter the fall term ready to learn again in their new grade. This summer, we had just over 4,000 participants in the summer reading program, and we had 1,139 finishers, which is a 48 percent increase over last year. So we're really excited about that. And our thanks to Lexi Riley, who's our youth services supervisor and our mighty youth services staff. During the eight weeks of the program, they provided 273 programs to our students, and they were attended by nearly 11,000 kids. So these are all free programs offered to any kid in the area who wants to attend, so we really hope to reduce barriers for those students in terms of participation. The theme for this summer's program was Read Wild, as we wanted to align with the Figgy's Marie Sendak exhibit, based on where the wild things are. So some of our programs were really kind of wild. We had the WAPC Center bring their Birds of Prey. The Grouse Museum brought their snakes. I made sure I missed that program. The Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works Department for the city really helped us out with our Touch a Truck event. That's always really popular. We served lunch at the library at Fairmont through the summer's food program that the schools do to probably an average of about 70 students a day. And then, of course, one of our last big events was tie dyeing, and that was really a bit of a surprise to our staff, and they went out, running out for additional supplies in the middle of the program because we ran out, because we had upwards of what?
300.
Of 300 people there learning how to tie dye. So, Melissa Olson, if you would raise your hand, so everybody knows who you are. Melissa is the treasurer of the Friends of the Davenport Public Library. They provide much of the funding support that covers the program expense for the summer reading program, and indeed, a lot of the program that we do throughout the year. Other than the staffing, you know, is provided by the Library General Operating Fund, but those extra dollars that are needed to bring snakes to the library are all provided by the Friends. And then, we also have Steve Eming, who's the president of Library Board of Trustees, and Malavika Shirkhande, who's a member of the board. And Steve is going to read the winning schools and who's representing them. We have some students from each of the schools here, and then we'll present the trophies, and we certainly love the mayor to come and.
I'd love to.
Pose for pictures with the students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And thank you to the city council, Mayor Klipch. The first award is for the small schools winner, and that is Jackson Elementary. And so if we could have the delegation from Jackson come up. They are Teresa Betchen, who is the principal, Nicole Willard, teacher librarian, and I'm not sure, I didn't catch Carly De Decker, but she may be here also. And coming with them, we have students Veronica Lang, Cora Bennett, Dale and Michael Prozowski, Kenzie Riley, and Mason Edward Riley. And there may be some others who came in late, but. Is that everyone from Jackson? Oh, we got some more. Wow, thanks for wearing. Come over here. Congratulations.
So we just like shake everyone's hands, or what? Congratulations, good job everybody. Congratulations, this is wonderful. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, and, okay, why don't we, want to do it over here? Where are you at?
I'm right here, Mayor.
Okay, where do you want me? Let me get right in the middle of all of you. Come on, let's scoot up here a little bit. Everybody can get, so you can see behind my head and body and everything else. We're going to look out there at all those pictures. We'll hold the trophy right here. You want to hold this for me? Why don't you hold that side and you hold this side? Okay. Got it? And I'll hold it back so we don't let it fall. There we go. Perfect. Congratulations.
Okay, next up, we have the large school winner, which again, this year is St. Paul. And from St. Paul, we have Pat Giorgio, who's the teacher librarian, and along with her, we have, we have Brayson and Adalissa Sodawasser, and Anna and Wyatt Giorgio. And there may also be some others there who came in late, or at least after I was taking names. Anyone else?
Congratulations, good job. Good job, everybody. Scoot up this way a little bit. Look over there, that guy over there. Come on up here, you're a big guy, so you can hold it this side. There we go. And then why don't you two, how about this? You hold this side and you hold this side. Would you hold this side for me? There you go. Okay, now we got it. There we go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And next, we have the most improved winner, which is Eisenhower. They did a tremendous job in improving. And from Eisenhower, we have Jennifer Easton, a teacher at Eisenhower. And we have students Isabella Easton, Leilani Hill, and Maddie Swanson, and perhaps some others who might have come in later.
Shake your hands, please. Congratulations. That's a good word. Trophy, why don't you guys scoot up this way a little bit? Come on this way a little bit. There we go. Between you two, there you go. Why don't you come over this side a bit? You two, there you go. You can help hold it. It's okay. Come on up here, look at that guy, all those people. Great. Congratulations.
So our programming year does not end with the end of summer reading, so if you are not doing anything this Saturday, we'll be having a neighborhood party at Eastern in honor of Library Card Sign-Up Month. So there'll be a lot going on there. The Ninja Warrior Course will be out on the lawn. There'll be an airplane paper flight course. You can build and test your skills flying paper airplanes. Variety of food trucks there, other entertainment. And Bubble Tea just opened as our new vendor at the cafe there, and they, so you can also check out the new vendor there. And then Saturday, October 6th, 10 to 4:00. If you are interested in local history and wonder about some of the things that are hidden away in various local history repositories in the Quad Cities, we'll be having an archives crawl. There'll be bus transportation from the various centers, and, but other repositories will be bringing some of their collections to one of our four main stops. And then Saturday, October 13th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Maine's 50th birthday party. So we'll be closing the street out in front of Maine and partying like it's 1960. Or maybe that's not such a good idea. We'll think about that. Okay, thank you.
Get those tie-dye t-shirts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to petitions and communications, and I'm going to start this evening. I want to thank all of our many citizens who come to our council meetings to share comments and concerns related to many items like zoning and new initiatives, and our recent community-wide dialogue regarding potential changes to the structure of the Civil Rights Commission. Since the potential ordinance changes were announced, we on council have been listening to feedback and discussing ways to address some of the concerns brought forward from the community. I sincerely appreciate every member, every member of our great city who took time to share their thoughts and feelings with the city council. We recognize that at this time, the topic is too divisive for both the city council and for the community at large. To be clear, the ordinance and this matter is closed and will not be considered by the city council or appear on a city council agenda. With this matter behind us, we look forward to strengthening our relationship and improving communication with the Civil Rights Commission. Their work has been and always will be vital to the long-term success of Davenport, and we thank everyone that has been involved throughout this process. Secondly, another announcement, which I'm excited to share, if Bruce, if you could come up for a minute and bring the hardware. Each year, the Iowa Finance Authority recognizes outstanding housing initiatives at their annual conference in Des Moines. The Housing Iowa Awards recognize programs, projects, and professionals from leadership and innovation advancing housing development in Iowa. This year, the city of Davenport was selected as the winner of the Single Family Development category for Riverview on 6th, Davenport's urban subdivision. The project was a comprehensive effort by the city over several years and included rehabilitation of existing owner-occupied homes, acquisition and demolition of blighted properties, improvements to public infrastructure, and construction of six new houses. On September 5th, the city was presented with the Housing Iowa Award in Des Moines. And I just want to recognize Bruce Berger, the head of our Community Planning and Economic Development, showing off the hardware, and, there you go. And, and thank you very much. Is there anything you just want to say very quickly about the award? But thank you. Again, we, as a number of us have noted, we were identified as the Small Business Community of the Year. This is another attempt in our work, that we continue to do that work, and this is another one of those initiatives.
Right, yeah, we're just appreciative that the Iowa Finance Authority saw fit to see the work going on. There's lots of great projects going on there. Maybe we can replicate this a few more times.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, the whole team. One last thing. This week, next week, Alderman Mattson will be chairing the meeting as my mayor pro tem here for the city council. I will be at the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, which is being held in Davenport in the Quad Cities. We have over 40 mayors, probably 100, and a total of 125 representatives from local, regional, national, and international companies and organizations that'll be here talking about the Mississippi River. And we are honored to be hosting this very large and prominent group of people that are going to be here, talking about a variety of initiatives that we'll be discussing. So, again, we are looking forward to that next week. You'll see a lot of people around town for three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. But again, it's another indication of how great our city is and our Quad City community that they chose this area. Literally anywhere, the MRCTI is 85 mayors from the source of the Mississippi up in Bemidji, Minnesota, all the way down to Louisiana and the Gulf of Mexico. So 85 mayors. So, again, we want to thank, and thank in advance to Alderman Mattson for stepping in and leading the meeting next week. I see one other comment tonight, is, that's Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make an announcement that we have an upcoming, and I say "we," myself and Alderman Clule is having a joint ward meeting on Monday, September 24th, at 6 o'clock at the Eastern Avenue Library. And the topic is how to get more involved, and I'm saying more because hopefully you already are, get more involved in the city. And that's learning how to become a member of a commission, or a board, or an agency, or whatever. We have all kinds of different opportunities. Or if you just want to volunteer at our library or parks, or something like that. So you can learn more about it. We're going to have staff there do some presentations, and hopefully answer questions, and hopefully we can get you connected. So again, that's Monday, September 24th, 6 o'clock at the Eastern Avenue Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say thank to you and to the colleagues and all the citizens that discussed and engaged in dialogue about the civil rights issue. Thank you very much for listening, and thank you for your kind statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew about the ward meeting that I will be having tomorrow. Our Parks Director will be coming to talk all things parks, so especially second ward residents, but all residents are welcome to come have a great conversation. We have some wonderful parks in Davenport. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGuinness.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to let everybody know that the Gold Coast Home Tour is coming up, not this weekend, coming up, but the next weekend, that's September 22nd and 23rd. It's 12 to 4:00 p.m. each day. There'll be five houses on tour, along with the German-American Heritage Center and the Jip Home and Grocery. So I hope you'll join us. There's some wonderful work that's been done on these homes. People have really, there's one particularly, people have really brought back, so please join us if you can. It'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you, Alderman McGuinness. And one last comment very quickly. This past week, we've had, it was a great event yesterday morning. Chad Dyson, our Parks and Rec Director, was there with me. It looks as if all the funds have been secured for Gabe's playground and, and also for the Miracle Field through a variety of initiatives, many people actively involved. And I know we'll report more about that later, and seeing that long-awaited and much-anticipated two projects come to fruition. So thank you to everybody involved. With that, we're going to move on to individual items on the discussion agenda. This is a third consideration for ordinance case number REZ 18-09, being the request of Jared Engler on behalf of McCarthy Improvement Company for the rezoning of 1.5 acres more or less, located at the northeast corner of Utica Ridge Road and East 56th Street, from CO Office to Office Shop District to C1 Neighborhood Shopping District to facilitate commercial development. Is there anyone from the public that has anything to say on this item?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Whoops, somebody wants, okay. Let's see there. Again, name and address, please.
Dennis Kramer. I live on the south side of East 58th Street in the Villas of Crow Valley. My back porch looks out onto the blank land of 56th Street over there. And for me, when I just get right down to the heart of this whole issue, it's no longer about Lot 1 and the rezone to C1 about that. It's no longer, it's not about the salon, never has been, and it's really no longer about the tenants that want to go in as C1. So, and there's already construction equipment on the land, so we know it's a done deal. But to me, it's about the rezoning of it without a reliable plan for the rest of the eight to 10 acres. And that's, there's about four to five acres that's owned by McCarthy Bush that's around it, and there's about four to five acres that's owned by Riverstone. That's back on the 56th Street side, and it butts up against 12 of our homes. So the bottom line for me is, really, I just want to know if C1 is likely to come on the 56th Street land. That's all I care about right now. If it is, I know it's taverns and restaurants coming. And, and I want to know, just so I can do my planning, I want to know where to live, because I won't live there with, with that kind of stuff there. Last week, Mr. Bush came up here and he talked about, and he said, and I quote, "I will go on the record to say that we have no intentions to come with any further zoning requests at this time, but if we did, we would do nothing beyond C1 with restrictions." Well, that's obvious, so we know that they're coming back to you later with C1 requests for rezone. May not be next month, may not be, you know, in the first half of the year, but it's coming. And don't think that Riverstone is sitting back and just, you know, they're watching what happens here. And Riverstone's the ones that owns the land against the 12 homes on 56th. So to me, you know, what's the bigger picture here? What's the plan? Where are we heading? What can we expect? You know, as people we deserve to know, as neighbors. You know, Alderman McGuinness gets it, we know that. You know, when I, in a previous house that I lived in, I built a deck. I did it myself, actually. And I had to submit a plan to the city. I had to tell them, you know, where are the decks located? Is it going to be attached to the house? What the materials are made of? How big is it? You know, what, what's the structure? Where are the footings going to be? How deep are the footings going to be? Everything. And I was, so everyone knew what to expect. And, you know, it just seems to me that we should expect something similar in a zoning plan. Something reliable, something that I can plan on. So I know you don't have to make comments after the public input, and, but we really appreciate when you do. You know, we don't always like what you have to say and don't agree with it, but at least we know where you stand, and we really appreciate it. So along that same spirit of transparency, I just have one question I would like you to address, if you would, but one question. Will you support a developer's request for C1 on 56th Street? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public who'd like to talk on this item?
I'll be very brief. Mike Ferris, 1950, 90s, 50th Court in Davenport. I spoke last week to Committee of the Hall, and my whole talk was concerning the proper zoning of this. And I think as you go up the major corridors of our city, this is the type of retail you will see along roads such as Kimberly and Brady, 53rd Street, Utica Ridge Road. This commercial service along that, it's consistent with what's already there, and it was, it's wholly contained within a commercial lot. So there isn't any abutting of any other zoning that would conflict with this. I think it's a great use for us, and I think it's something that Davenport along that corridor would very wholly support. And I believe that the traffic pattern that had been discussed before will not change because traffic to this lot will come in and out from Utica Ridge Road. It will not go down into the neighborhood. So I believe it's a, it's a good use of the property, it's a proper use of the property, and it would be a great support. The council's supported it so far. I'd encourage you to continue to support the small business, homegrown business that would like to stay in Davenport. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak on this item? I think, well, hers and then yours.
Good evening, council. First off, thank you for what you guys do. It means a lot to take this job on for all of us citizens in Davenport, so I appreciate that you guys do. My name's Stacy Spillam. I'm the owner of Pure Hair Studio. We currently reside at 5515 Utica Ridge Road. I've been a hairstylist for 16 years. You guys know that by now. And for 16 years, I've worked very hard for the quality of my work and my reputation. And it's paid off. It gave me the ability to own my own business, and for six years, I've worked really hard at that, too. So we've worked hard at our quality of work and our reputation as well. So again, it paid off. It paid off so that my husband and I have been given the opportunity to expand our business, to build a building, to employ more women, more hard-working women. And also the ability to hopefully encourage other small businesses to join us in expanding and growing and being a great small business owner in Davenport. So now, moving forward as a developer and as a landlord, I will also work extremely hard to be, to, for the quality of our work, and also work hard for our reputation. And that's what I want the council, as well as the neighbors, to know, that my 16 years of hard work can't go down the drain now. So any neighbors that we will include in our building will also have to not only meet our quality of standards that Pure Hair Studio has, but also exceed them. We want to bring value to not only our business, not only our building and our development, but also to the neighbors and everybody surrounding us, and to Davenport. So I will work extremely hard, as I have, to make sure that we have an amazing corner going on on the Utica, Utica and 56th, have amazing tenants that respect our area, respect the hard work that I've done for 16 years, and just make a nice little development on the corner. So that is my, my word, my guarantee, and where my hard work will be. I appreciate this process we've been through, and I thank you very much for your time also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you. Oliver Ivory, 5144 Hamilton Court. I just wanted to call and say that I support this project, simply because I think we should be encouraging entrepreneurship and small businesses in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Carol Kandler, and I was, am a local resident of Davenport, and I've known Stacy for almost 15 years when she started out with her business. And of those 15 years, I And of those 15 years, I have been blessed not only to know her as a friend, but also as my hairstylist. She is a hard-working person, and I know that she is only going to be an addition to that green space. And I want to say to everybody that even doubted that she would be a detriment, she has, the thing is, if she is approved, which I'm hoping so much that she is, she's going to have a beautiful building there, possibly with a boutique and a coffee shop. And the people that live in that area, when they do their jogging or their walking, what better place to stop than a coffee shop, or a boutique, or a yoga studio? Just consider that Mrs. Spillam, what she's offering, I just think it's going to be such a benefit to the area. I've never known anybody as young as what she is, work as hard as what she does, for as long as what she has, and employ as many people as what she does, and help them buy homes, and I just think that it's a wise decision to approve this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll start, let's start again. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, please. Oh, excuse me. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been an interesting process, and I think that we've all, over the last six weeks here in council chambers, spoken through the issues as well as we probably can. I appreciate everybody that's come forward these last six weeks, folks that came to the neighborhood meeting as well. And it all comes down to this evening. I continue to support the motion. I believe that, small business aside, this is the right thing for Davenport. I understand that this is my ward, and that residents are not entirely in favor of the motion, but I do believe that it is, it has been well thought out. I think that there's been a process that has worked the way it should have from the very beginning. This motion is not nearly what it was when we first started out eight weeks ago. It's changed because people have gotten together and come together on the issues. In response to Mr. Kramer's question, C1 coming to 56th Street, I do not believe that zoning guidelines would support anything other than CO and Lot 2. And I've been on record since the very beginning saying that I don't believe that any other zoning would be appropriate, that CO is the step down for those neighbors, respects them. So I think I personally will vociferously support that, should somebody come forward asking for a different designation, but I believe that our zoning standards would not support it at the very beginning. That's my understanding. So I won't belabor the issue. I continue to support the motion.
Alderman Matson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, just in lieu of your question for transparency, I support this fully, but the land next right up against you, that's a different discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Matson. Anyone else seeing none? Let's have a roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Our third item is a resolution approving case F18-11, being the request of Spear Development LLC for the final plat of Spear Commercial First Edition containing three lots. The property is located at the southeast corner of East 53rd Street and Eastern Avenue. Alderman Tompkins, do you have a, is there, I'm just thinking, we have a, pardon me? Yeah, anybody from the public? Let's go there first, sorry. Anyone in the public wants to discuss this topic?
With a consideration.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Now, any discussion from aldermen? Excuse me, I got ahead of my button, got pushed there. Alderman Tompkins.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Bruce Berger to talk about some changes that we're looking at. And thank you for all of staff's time on working on this project. I do appreciate it.
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. So since last week, the main issue, as staff understood, it was public versus private on that small, little, it's 285 or so linear feet of road, coming off of 53rd Street, which would really be Spring Street, I believe. And so, discussed some with the developer, actually both parties with the development team, and I believe the representative tonight, too. So the compromise you saw in front of you, we ended up working out, I think late yesterday, this morning, was some language that would have the city accepting, it would be built to city standards, paid for by the development, would be built to city standards, and then the city would accept it on the front end, unless at some point in the future it fell into common ownership, because Lots 2 and Lot 3 have not been developed yet, and it may be some time before they are. If they end up being developed under common ownership, then that's something the city would be able to convey the property, or that road back to becoming a private road. But it appears that that's unlikely, and they can probably speak more to that, but I think that's the language you see before you.
Thank you. Before I read the motion, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I see Alderman Matson has a question.
Thank you. So Bruce, to be clear, the developer will build the road, and it will be a public road, and they're going to build it to all of public road specifications?
Correct.
And they're going to pay for it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Would you please read the new amendment?
Absolutely. I have a motion to amend Condition 4 from the Planning and Zoning Commission letter. The area on the plat designated as a street, south of 53rd and across from Spring Street, shall be built to city specifications as a public street and shall be accepted as public right-of-way. If at any time Lots 1, 2, and 3 come under common ownership, the city may vacate the street back to the common owner, who shall raise no objection thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need a discussion on this one, Tom? No. But I will do a roll call on this one. Pardon me?
Voting's fine.
Okay. With that, this is, we're voting on the amendment, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Great. Now, with the amended motion in place, will the clerk call the roll on the amended motion?
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and the resolution is adopted. Number four is a resolution approving the specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Pump Station 203 Generator and Controls Project. Is there any public with comments on this item?
With a consideration.
Nope, they're not coming. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any aldermen? Seeing none? Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And number five is a motion approving the request for a new license for Riverside Liquor II, Two Brothers Locust LLC, 1528 West Locust Street, license type E liquor, B wine, C beer. And is there any public with business on this item?
With a consideration.
Oh, back there.
Okay. Thank you. Please, just your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jaranjeet Singh, 4007 East 59th Street, Davenport. I'm the one who remodeled that building and make it up to go to the way the city want, make it nice and clean, and I'm ready to open the business. And I want to work with the city and the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My wife and I own the building that Janey's wanting to open this liquor store in. He came before the council a year ago, I think, and it was approved. My wife and I are a little confused why we're doing this again. If it was okay then, it should be okay now. Our dealings with him have been 100% okay. He has two other locations that are clean, orderly, conduct business in a good fashion. I don't know why he wouldn't be approved to do what you've got to do here. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
With a consideration.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion by any aldermen? Yes, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, they fixed the building up, you know, some of the neighbors were concerned about the number of liquor stores and the impact it was going to have in the neighborhood. But I had a, you know, I had a conversation with the gentleman last Friday, you know, we've talked several times in the past. He's done a very nice job on the building, and Mr. Kai's been in the neighborhood forever. So all I ever ask from anybody is to be a good neighbor, obey the law, and you'll be very successful in the fourth ward. And I share that with the other neighbors. The city can't prevent people from getting liquor license. That's a state responsibility, so, you know, I look forward to having him in the neighborhood as long as he's a good neighbor, along with everybody else in that neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to let you know, since there was a petition with so many signatures, I did consult with corporate counsel, and they saw no reason why we couldn't grant the license. And in addition, the Chief of Police gave me permission to read his brief. He's nodding back there at me. We did pull police calls for the establishment, just to get a sense of if there were any issues there, and this is from the Chief Sikorsky, addressed to myself and Alderman Ambrose. "Our crime prevention staff ran the calls for service comparing 2017 and 2018 for the Happy Hollow, and I have attached them above for your review. The vast majority have been business checks or extra patrols self-initiated by our staff. By looking at the calls, I see that Happy Hollow appears to be calling DPD, the police department, when they need assistance, which is certainly what we want. By reviewing the calls, I don't see a reason why we should not renew their license request, and I tend to agree." Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Grip.
I haven't heard any compelling reasons why we would not grant the liquor license in this case, but we've talked about this from time to time in the past. Tom and I would appreciate, again, hearing some, any options that we have as a council to start trying to reestablish our ability to regulate the number of liquor stores in Davenport. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, for another opportunity. Alderman Rossen was speaking of the Happy Hollow. This is a proposal, and we got the information from the Happy Hollow, and the neighbors do pay very close attention to what's going on there. Thanks, Rita. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments by our aldermen, would you please call the roll?
Matson?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
And that motion is passed. Is there a motion for approval of all the items on the consent agenda?
Moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? Seeing none? Again, any, all, any public with business tonight?
Just very quickly, Council, I'm Jason Gordon with the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce and a resident of the Third Ward. Just wanted to thank you tonight for your vote for Stacy and Chris Spillam's resigning request. As you know, the very first committee of the whole, I came to you and indicated the chamber was supportive of this small business. That's 80% of our membership. Business retention and expansion is 80% of our growth year over year. So we just wanted, on behalf of the chamber, thank you for your support tonight.
Thank you.
Stacy Spillam, I also, too, just wanted to personally thank you for approving this request to rezon. I'm very excited. And I also wanted to thank you again, just for the hard work that you guys do. Can't be a fun job, but hopefully it's a little bit rewarding. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Anyone else from the public?
Candy Pasternak, resident of the Sixth Ward, employee in the Third Ward. Again, sort of following up, I didn't know if there'd be questions at the time Mr. Berger came up and chatted about Item 3 on the discussion agenda, but on behalf of the developer, Brian Spear family, and the Gurley Leap Automotive Group, we thank you as well.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Andrew Kiefer, Fourth Ward. Just remarking earlier to your statement, the press release and what have you, and the issue with the civil rights ordinance, we can appreciate the withdrawal. However, we feel that there still needs to be assurances that this is not going to happen again. It was kind of ridiculous how this fell apart over the span of a month, being tabled. Two meetings happened where the community, you know, outcry was to delete this item and, you know, just forget about it. If you wanted to have conversations, have conversations, but delete this item. That didn't happen. The item was tabled until the 19th, and then there was a work meeting that was called and then dissolved because of the public outcry. Conversations never happened. I know that I'm a little bit all over the place with this because, you know, it seems like everybody was all over the place with it to begin with. So we never got a reason why. We're still wondering, there's some language in the press release that makes us, you know, hesitant to accept that this is over.